School Policies.
Thank you, Chair. This is, these were rolled. Everything you see before you except one, which I'll get to in a moment, was deferred until this meeting. And there were some questions around specifically within the charter school sort of block of the seven policies, which constitute a complete rewrite or sea change of all the charter school policies. So, you know, rather than go through them, I will actually ask Board Member Block to sort of take up here because she's the one that asked to defer these and had some good suggestions, which were incorporated into the draft you have. And I'm going to scroll through all these until I find exactly what those are and she can explain those and what process she went through to get to that.
Member O'Hara Block.
Thanks, Chair Elrod and Dr. Sevier. So, I believe, Dr. Sevier, and you may have said this last time as well, that these policies, essentially what we're trying to do here is just take what has been in charter school procedure and ensure that it's in policy. And my understanding of part of the reason to do that is because the State Board of Education does an authorizer report, and it was one of the recommendations in their report and it's something that makes sense for us as we go forward. And so, I asked for some additional time to be able to review these with some folks at the State Board of Education who work on that authorizer report and to whom I've had, with whom I've had conversation in the past about some of our charter policies. And so, I made just two suggestions, one here that is highlighted, that really just get us like ever so slightly more in line with what the State Board had recommended and some of the things that are specifically within the Charter Commission's own language. And the purpose of that, I think, is just to help ensure that as we do things like intervention, as we do things like approval, authorization, renewal, that we are as closely aligned with what the state policies of the commission are, so that if we make a decision, it gives us just that much more of an argument to make about our decision to, to the Charter Commission. And so, these really aren't all that different than what was here before, very slight adjustments. And thank you to everyone on the team for their understanding and leeways to have. I know those conversations have been had, I just wanted to also have them myself, so appreciate it.
Board Member Block, with your permission, I'd like to scroll down to the other little change that was different from two weeks ago, just so everybody can see that we did it.
Yeah.
And it's that.
So, on the first change, the one we just looked at is with the tiered interventions, just specifically saying that we have the ability, which was already in there and is also in our procedural handbook, but that we do have the ability to both go through the tiered interventions in a structured, one tier to the next way? Or should something be serious enough that we can jump from sort of tier one all the way to tier four as needed? And then here, just getting slightly more specific on renewal criteria, in adding that we would have as categories, among the categories, so including but not limited to categories for renewal criteria that include academic, organizational, and financial performance, which are just very well aligned to the initial applications that we see in the criteria that we use to review those. And, and just reiterating that that's based on what, that we are outlining expectations in the agreement in those categories. So, again, very slight changes.
All right, thank you. So, Policy 1.900, 1.901, 1.902, 1.903, 1.904, 1.905, and 1.906, all need to be voted on. I am asking that I get a motion for us to move with them as a cluster of policies, so all of them together. May I have a motion for approval of all of those policies?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, it's first and seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. It appears to be everybody. Thank you so much. That moves us on to 2.800.
Thank you, Chair. 2.800 is one that was not before you last time, but this was a good time to add it in. In Policy 2.805, one that you already have, has been on the books for a long time, it says that the Director of Schools shall seek approval of, from the Board for expenditures over $100,000, which is kind of the contract cap that we have. Shall seek approval is terribly non-definitive. So, this was a good opportunity to say, you know, that the Board shall actually approve those contracts. Along with that, it has been the practice of our city's legal department to, to sort administratively deal with small claims, small fender bendery type things, under a certain threshold. So, this just puts all those together. If, we've got Mr. Marsh here from legal, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, that cap is set by the Metro Council, and that has been recently raised. So, that's what kind of brought this to our attention, and that cap is $25,000 for those. So, rather than actually put those numbers in this policy, because invariably, if we have $100,000 in one policy, and we have $100,000 in another policy, one day a Board comes along and says that should be $150,000, and it gets changed one place and it doesn't the other, then it, it just creates confusion sometimes. So, rather than, than try to put different numbers in different places, we just said that we will follow whatever number is set by the Board and whatever number is set by Metro Council for those two situations.
Correct. So, that is, I am $100,000 and $25,000. Is there any discussion from Board members? All right, seeing none, may I have a motion for approval for Policy 2.800?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been first and seconded. All those in favor of 2.800 with these changes, please raise your hand. That is unanimous.
Thank you, Chair. And finally, the, as you may remember, Tennessee law changed that requires school boards, other educational institutions to incorporate a specific nondiscrimination policy relative to the Jewish people. There've been some questions about, about that, and been working with some members, and actually, I'd like to reference Dr. Nabah McKinnney, I believe she wants to, she's, she's been working to, relative to maybe some amending language that she wants to read into the...
Are we skipping the instructional one? Or is that...
It would be instructional program. It is in both 4.100, 5.5, and 6.304 is a reference to the antisemitism defined and all of those other things. So, all three of these policies would be touched by whatever change is made.
Yep.
So, Dr. Prithina Nabah McKinnney, if you will, please state what your amended language is.
Yeah, we, thank you, Board, I was going to call you Board Chair, former Board Chair, Elrod. Thank you for the opportunity. The new policy that we are looking to add language to, or the amended proposal that we're looking to add language to, is the Board shall not discriminate on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, or disability in its instructional program or activities. This includes discrimination based on any religious belief or non-belief, such as antisemitism, Islamophobia, or any forms of religious intolerance. For the purpose of this policy, antisemitism is defined per state law. And there is an annotated state law code that will be included in the policy.
And just for clarification, that would replace the highlighted section. It would be a cut and paste, essentially, in the one you see before you on the screen.
Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion on 4.100? Yes, O'Hara Block.
I'm assuming that, that the language was worked with legal staff? I believe you said that, but just to clarify.
Yes, we did work with our legal counsel, Justin Marsh. Did you want to contribute anything as it relates to that? It falls within law to be able to list the definition within state law, because they can refer back to the state statute.
Thank you. I have a quick question. Can we do 4.100, 5.5, and 6.304 as a block?
That would be my preference.
Okay. All right, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion for 4.100, 5.500, and 6.304 to add the language that Dr. Nabah McKinnney has offered to us?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All right, it's been first and seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you so much, it's unanimous. And that gets us to 6.312.
So, the last policy before we get into a little bit of other business is related to communication devices. Let me just get down here to it real quick. And this comes to us again from a Board Member Block. So, she requested some language around earphones, and it, as you can see, it says, "including earphones." So, I've spoken with her, and I believe that meets the intention that she had set forth, and I'll let, ask if she had anything to offer that the Chair recognized her for that purpose.
Go ahead.
Nothing, nothing in particular to offer, except to say thanks. And, and I know at Hillsborough High School, the enforcement of this policy this year has been, I have heard from parents and students that it has been very helpful. And so, I would love, just the one other thing I would ask is, Dr. Battle, would you mind just saying a little bit about sort of like how you all work through enforcing this or any other policies like it?
Sure, I'd be happy to. The one thing I've been sharing about this particular policy is that there's actually not much of a practice shift for MNPS. There were the inclusion of the, the earphones, which has been explicit around what we mean for personal devices and other electronic devices. So, not much shift there. I do want to remind us as a learning community, we are a restorative district, and so, we take these laws and we follow them, we adhere to them, but we also want to make sure we're as supportive as we can to our educators and our students. And so, simply put, we want to make sure that we're communicating well, often, frequently, that we're enforcing the law, but we're also being very mindful of the young people that we serve and the way in which they use devices today. We have a very kind of progressive discipline process, restorative process, in-house, of which our school administrators and educators are very familiar with, trained, and to be as supportive as possible, so that we can adhere and be in compliance with state law.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, oh, excuse me. Seeing none, may I have a motion for approval for 6.312?
Someone.
Have a second? It's been first and seconded. All those in favor of these amendments to 6.312, please raise your hand. That is everyone. Thank you so much. That gets us to a school calendar discussion in regards to our upcoming special election. For that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Battle and her team to present some options to us, for us to discuss as a Board. So, Dr. Battle, may I pass it on?
She's excited about election.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, School Board Members. I, I have invited Morris Sullivan up, our Chief Operating Officer, to lead us in this discussion. This is a discussion that may, could involve Board Member approval, Board approval at some point, depending on the direction we go. But we wanted to just make sure the full Board was aware of the current circumstance and the impact it could have to the school calendar, the advisement, and kind of the study that myself and my team are undertaking to bring back the best recommendation, that's the least disruptive to our schools, but also keep safety and security at the top of our agenda. And so, Chief Morris Sullivan is going to walk us through the current circumstance that has an impact, that could have an impact on our school calendar, and our current thinking about where we are, and then we'll, no action is needed today. We will bring back a recommendation to the entire Board for approval if needed. Chief Sullivan.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Madam Committee Chair, for giving us a few moments on your calendar. On July 24th, we were advised by the Election Commission that the Governor had called a special election to fill the seat of U.S. Representative Mark Green, Congressional District 7, who had recently resigned. The dates for the election were set by the Governor as being October 7th and December 2nd. And as Congressional District 7 encompasses parts of Davidson County, this will affect our schools as several serve as polling places. Here's the list of schools in Congressional District 7 that serve as polling places. You see that we have schools throughout the district. We have about 20 sites that will be impacted. So, we immediately started, started looking at what our options could be. Of course, serving as a polling site is an honor in our democracy, but for an act of school building, it's also a challenge, particularly when you are already, when you have already set your calendar. Since our school calendar is already set, we, as a district support staff, have begun workshopping various options that we could use to react and respond to this called election. You will see on this chart various options that we are working through now, evaluating their pros and cons before we bring a recommended course of action to our superintendent. At that time, she will bring, as she said, that recommendation to the Board for any course of action. These options include plans such as closing school these days and using two of our inclement weather days, to modifying our calendar to swap professional development days. Again, we're, we're looking very quickly to evaluate all the pros and cons, think about things such as security, safety, our facilities, where we can accommodate the election safely, if we can do both at the same time, et cetera. So, we're, we're looking at all those options very quickly, and we'll get a recommendation to Dr. Battle soon.
Thank you, Chief Sullivan. And of course, bringing it before you in this Governance Committee meeting, would be happy to hear any thoughts or priorities from the Board here or outside, directly to me, of the Board meeting. If there's anything you would like to have us consider or be advised around as we are kicking around some. And what you see here are just some examples of pros and cons. This could be a multi-page deck, if we tried to include everything here, but we just wanted to capture some of the ways we're thinking about the pros and cons. I just also wanted to just reemphasize, we set our calendar months in advance of the start of the school year. Actually, we do this two semesters prior. And so, this is a late notice, it's one that we know could have impact and implications to both our educators and our families, and so, we want to be extremely mindful of that, which is why we're not bringing a recommendation today. We want to be very thoughtful and deliberate in how we manage this particular situation, one of which we just could not have planned for before the start of the school year. So, I will pause there. Committee Chair Elrod, and if there are any questions, discussions, we would be happy to, happy to capture those as well as beyond the Governance Committee meeting.
May I see the list of schools, please, real quick?
Sure, of course.
Thank you. I'd like to, I will see, I see Dr. Nabah McKinnney's question, I will get to you. I'd like to prioritize first, asking the Board members that will be affected by this. So, Dr., I mean, not Dr. Taylor, Mr. Taylor, Member Taylor, do you have any concerns or question? To make sure that we get to you first, because it will impact your district.
Well, usually, I allow ladies to go first, but since you insist, I play a doctor on TV, too. But, my first thought, I saw a lot of, in the pros and cons, it talked about safety for our students, and so, I think that's priority. I also served as a poll official for the Election Commission on those days, and I can understand the challenges operationally. If we were to keep school in session, allow voters into the building at the same time as our students, does the Election Commission, or does the state provide funding to support security for our students, or additional security?
Thank you for your question. To our knowledge, they do not provide any funding for that. And given your experience with the Commission, there's some competing kind of tensions around what safety and security should look like around polling sites as well. And so, our team has been working closely with MNPD as well as the Commission to, to learn more about what the balance could be. We also know for a number of years now, because of safety and security, we've made decisions around our calendar to, to protect for that. So, no additional funding that we are aware of, and there's competing kind of priorities around the tensions around what safety and security should look like on, at polling sites on election days.
Member O'Hara Block, I see Hillwood, do you have any?
Hillwood is...
Sorry, that is, but it's not you.
Aiken.
You were Hillsborough.
Aiken, Sylvan Park.
And we are not, we don't have a Hillwood High.
We sure don't.
But that is a building that could be, it is a polling place, and there are still folks who are in and around.
My apologies. It is used, it's used as an early voting site and an election day site.
So sorry, I saw Hill and just went with it.
Yeah. I do actually have, though. I, I've just been looking at...
Just about all of you do.
Yeah, just in looking at the couple of schools that, Sylvan Park and Aiken, I mean, I'm thinking about what I know about those buildings and where you could potentially provide a larger room with a secure setting, but it would, to Member Taylor's point, require additional security. Possible, yes, additional security also required. And so, that does seem to be the primary challenge. It does, it would look to me, at least for the schools that I know on this list that I've been in, like, there might be one large room, but maybe not. Nope, not all of them. There you go.
Member Taylor?
Yeah. Gower Elementary does not have a location that would be easily accessible out of the way of where the students are. They flow directly into an open area where all the students switch back and forth to get to specials, to get...
Yeah, as you can imagine, this takes, this is kind of a case-by-case scenario, because all of our buildings are designed very differently, and so, part of us being, trying to be intentional slow about bringing a recommendation is making sure we understand what the potential implications are for each school site.
Would it be possible to go to the slide that shows the different choices again? Thank you. While you're reviewing those, do you mind if I move real quick? Dr. Nabah McKinnney, let's hear your questions.
So, I do have Margaret Allen that's in my district as well, that, that's on the slide. I guess my question for you is around days to make up. Given that it's a federal-state election, those days aren't exempt, we still have to make up those days within our calendar days that we are required? Like, is there any exemption from the state or federal around that?
We, we already accounted for the normal election days in our calendar. So, these are additional special election days, if you will. And so, those are not accounted for. When we account for those in our calendar, we actually have to use our own stockpile days, because there's no law or rule that school can't, like, those two things can't happen simultaneously. We have, as a community, prioritized safety and security in this space. And so, the last few years, we've just been building our calendar around it. So, if the question is, is there some type of waiver or exemption to that? To our knowledge, no. There is one option here where we would have to collaborate with the Tennessee Department of Education to determine if some of the waiver examples would apply in this particular situation. And so, this would be the first go at it, so we would need to learn a little bit more about the requirement for using days that are listed here. So, there's a few that would require state approval. And then, with regards to making up days, that would also require a waiver and approval from Tennessee Department of Education. Normally, when you exhaust those days without approval, you are in a makeup situation. For us, would mean we would be making up days after Memorial Day.
Yeah, and I guess that's my concern, since it is a federal-state election done by the Governor, special election, like, the feasibility of us having some type of exemption so that we wouldn't have to use inclement weather or makeup days to do that instructional time, if we could explore the possibility.
Yeah, there's a few, there's a few examples here that would, we would need to obtain preapproval if it were, if it were exemptable for us, given the type of day that's displayed.
Thank you. Member Mays?
Along those same lines, would it be a possibility to, if we have to use those inclement weather days, to add those back, to just be given a couple of days back to the calendar? If that makes sense?
Yes, but it has other kind of domino effect implications. So, it'll, it would either be adding days, which means we're in school longer after Memorial Day. It could be replacing days, like swapping out days, which means you'll be reducing the number of professional development days or other vacation days. So, all of that is possible, but have implications. I mean, for our families who've planned for our calendar, we just have to understand that it would have some negative impact on them. There are some HR complications with how many days fall within a pay window, like, we would have to work through all of those logistics once we have a decision made. I will note that we are not the only district impacted by this, so we have been reaching out to other districts to see, they're all over the place. I think every district we've talked to right now, all dealing with it differently. And so, I can't say there's even a trend right now around what districts are doing, because everybody's just in a very different space.
Actually, what I meant more was like banking those days, not necessarily using them for instructional days. And what I mean is, if we have to use two of our snow days to cover this, can we get those days put back in our bank in the event that we have to use them later?
Right now, no.
Okay.
That, right now, that's not how the formula works. It would go back to the last question about getting some type of waiver, if it was approvable. We're not sure yet, this is a new situation, on if that would be approvable.
Do we know, I'm sorry, do we know what type of timeline that we're looking at if we submit a request for a waiver?
Oh, no, I, I don't, but I'm sure that the Commissioner and her team would understand the pressure that the district is under in making a decision. They've been pretty responsive in the past around these types of conversations and waivers, but I can't timestamp it for them, per se.
Thank you.
I was gonna, I'll go with, I'll go with Zach, and then Frida, and then I'll give mine. All right, go ahead.
Have we, I think, I feel like I probably know the answer to this, but is the Election Commission able to consolidate some precincts, given that it's a special and turnout is lower? For example, Gateway Elementary, that precinct exists, and there's, on Election Day, I'll put a $20 bill down, there will be no more than 20 people that vote in person at Gateway Elementary on Election Day, which is because, it's drawn because of how a state senate and a house and a congressional all converge, and it's just, it's about 50 houses that vote at that precinct. And so, I, that's, that's a location where I'm not as concerned about the security, because you're going to have 20 people come in and out of the building throughout the day. I'm curious if it's, if we've asked the Election Commission about trying to consolidate to maybe some of the larger schools, like, where it's probably more feasible at Hunter's Lane to, you know, sanction off the gym, and like, that's, you know, voter only, and is it disruptive to the school to not use the gym that day? Yes, but it's light years less disruptive than some of these other options. I feel like the Election Commission would push back and say, well, no, they need voters to vote on what's on their card. But I didn't know, and I don't know if this is a question for our attorneys or Board, I mean, for Election Commission attorneys, as to where there's, there's leeway when it's a special election?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let Chief Sullivan chime in here, but a couple of things. There are a few districts, school districts, that have zero schools, schools impacted by this because of how their county decides polling sites. I will also share that in years past, when we've tried to not, in years past, we've only expanded the number of school sites, as opposed to decrease them, because when this started to really be a thorn in our side around being in school versus not, we actually tried to get to a reduction. But I, my experience has been that it's usually not met with any approval, given the assignment and just the protections around elections. But Chief Sullivan, anything you want to add? You have a lot more experience with this than I.
As a, I'll, I'll put a different hat on for a minute. As a former Election Commissioner, I will say that it is, it is advantageous to use schools from an election standpoint. From a school standpoint, it's really hard on us, as I said in this. It's an honor, but it's hard. So, I, I hear what you're saying, and, but from an election standpoint, it is, schools are handicap accessible, they have great access, they're known in the community, these, you know, they, these types of things that are important and vital to, to allowing access for electors and to voters. And changing and consolidating polling sites is something that elected commissioners can vote to do. vote to do, can meet and vote to do. It is, it is, you have certain windows within which you can do that. We may already be past that. And I haven't looked at the dates for this election, but, but it's also, that creates confusion for, for voters, so it is.
Yeah, and I'll say, we'll ask the question. I mean, I don't think it, it hurts to ask. So, let's ask the question, just to make sure we're not leaving any option on the table. We are just speaking from our experience. So, let's ask the question and see what we receive back.
And our election commission has been just fantastic to work with, so.
Chair Player?
This is a little bit out of the box, but would it be possible to move portables and have the portal would be the election location on school property? Something like if Gower doesn't have an isolated gym. But I know, I'm feeling this logistics of moving a portal from one place to another, if we even have extra portables at that.
Yeah, we, and it is, I don't know if everyone understands how expensive it is to move portables. We're talking, I mean, it is, yeah. And so, yeah, and it takes time. We probably don't even have enough time to do it at this point, nor do we have access.
Good idea. I mean, good thinking, but, yeah.
I like the thinking outside the box.
Again, that's, remember, remember when I said that list is much longer of the pros and cons, so.
So, my request would be for us to lean away from anything that requires state approval, be that whether it's the virtual learning days, or even if we're making a decision based upon them potentially forgiving those days being missed to school, as historically, those can take a long time to get approval on, and it can be questionable of whether we get that approval or not for all kinds of reasons. And I know that we need to get this decision to our parents and to our staff as soon as possible. The option that seems to be the best of these solutions, that are good solutions that have been provided to us for a situation we have not created, is to modify the calendar, changing the PD days, if I understand it correctly, and I want to make sure I understand it correctly. Are we saying that we would, in essence, change PD days from what are currently scheduled as PD days to now be PD days on December 7th, excuse me, October 7th and December 2nd? And so, we would have days that would then, those students would then have come in on those days that are now currently listed as PD days, and that those days would then be turned into PD days on the 7th and the 2nd?
Yeah, that is one example. However, yes, and there's several cons to that as well from other metrics, accountability things. We, we just want to be very thoughtful, and we want to be able to lay all of that out for the board as we advise. Some of these seem pretty simple on the surface until you start thinking about all the downsides to doing that, including the accountability we have around attendance and the accountability we have around making our payroll cycles. I think this is where this one came up. So, like, there are some heavy trade-offs from some that seem smaller. We also know in that particular class, you would be switching days, you wouldn't be losing a day, but you would be switching days for parents and families' calendars and things of that nature. So, yes, and I want to make sure that we're laying out all the downsides so that we're all on the same page around what we're trading off when we do that.
I think it has a high level of confusion for families because they will have the old calendar because they are like myself. They printed it off, put it on their refrigerator, and that's what it is. It's already in their iPhone. And so, there will be confusion about that. The easiest thing, it seems, to message is either that schools are open or schools are closed. And so, I think that's probably where we need to make a decision, is they're either closed, we use our weather days, and that would be my preference for safeties. And then, if they're open, I understand that there's a lot of understandable concerns about additional policing at polling sites. But I think that will be requested by families as well. So, are there any other questions on the board floor? Ms. Tyler?
And forgive me if this has already been discussed, but do we have a security plan? Have we talked to MNPD about what that would look like already? Do they have availability to help us on those days? Do we know?
It's complicated, but yes, our team has been in conversation with MNPD. Remember, it's, so what we're up against here is there's a school safety and security plan, and then there's election commission safety and security plan. And those two convergen, don't always have the same priorities around how you have a successful day or election cycle. And so, Chief Sullivan and her team have already started conversations. We wanted to bring it today because this is timely, and it will have an impact on everyone in our learning community. So, we just wanted to make sure everyone knows that this is something we're going to be bringing back soon. But that is part of the tension, and we're having those conversations. We would say more, they would say less, as an example. So, we're just trying to create, again, a balance, but making sure that the main things continue to be the main things for us as a school district.
Member Mays?
Yes, just one other thing to consider as we talk about potentially closing schools, even though it would, you know, we would potentially just close schools, that would be the best idea. You have to consider the parents who would also have to get childcare for those, those additional days. So, don't want to lose sight of that because that is definitely going to impact families as well.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So, one last question. Because of the potential that this is pretty disruptive to folks' calendar and schedules, are we hoping that at our next board meeting, we'll have something in place? And if we need to take action, we'll have that before us? Because I, I would want to make sure if we are going to close schools, we give folks as much time.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, we didn't want to just wait until next board cycle. We wanted to make sure that the awareness was there, that we're going to be bringing our best thinking and recommendation back for the board to consider.
Within that recommendation, will you also include like how that's going to be messaged to students and staff and families?
We'll bring, yes, we'll bring as much of it as we can so we can hit go once we have approval on the plan.
Thank you so much. All right. Thank you so much, Chief Sullivan. Thank you, Dr. Battle. All right. Be no further business, this meeting is adjourned.